September sixteenth, regular Board of Alderman meeting. Would everyone please join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Alderman Kramer.
Right.
Alderman Leahy.
Here.
Alderman Lockmuller.
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Here.
Alderwoman Parker Tice.
Here.
Alderman Ploukka.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
And Alderman Weggie.
Here.
Next on the agenda is item three, approval or amendment of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the, to the agenda? Alderman Leahy.
On the consent agenda, will we be given an opportunity to question a line item? Or should I pull the warrant list off the consent?
Why don't we wait? We get there, we can talk about that.
Thank you, sir.
See what the line item is. Any objection to approving the agenda by acclamation? Seeing none, it will be so approved. Next on the agenda is announcements, appointments, proclamations, and recognitions. We have one. Folks, I'm very proud to announce that we have won three awards in recognition of work on the Brentwood Bound project. In front of you. The city of Brentwood received three awards from the City-County Communications and Marketing Association, or the 3CMA. The 3CMA announced the 2019 winners of its National Savvy Awards competition during the ceremony at the 3CMA Annual Conference in Denver, Colorado on September fifth. The city won the resident participation for a population from zero to 115,000 people. The Award of Excellence for Brentwood Bound Community Engagement. Won the graphic design for a population of zero to 71,000, which was the Silver Circle Award for Brentwood Bound. And finally, under video education training for a population of zero to 60,000, the city won the Award of Excellence for Brentwood Bound Videos. The Savvy Awards recognize outstanding local government achievements in communications, public sector marketing, and citizen-government relationships. The Savvy salute skilled and effective city-county-agency or district professionals who have creatively planned and carried out successful innovations in communications and marketing. 3CMA received over 700 entries and presented 72 first-place Savvy Awards, 72 second-place Silver Circle Awards, and 73 third-place Awards of Excellence. This is a reflection, folks, of our staff and others. It was truly a collaborative effort, but, you know, I think we would be remiss to not acknowledge the efforts of Janet and, and everyone in that department for helping out and resulting in these awards. Next on the agenda, public hearing. The 2019 property tax rates. I apologize, I left my glasses at home, so I'm going to open up the public hearings for the 2019 property tax rates. Anyone in the, uh, that's not gonna work. Anyone in the public care to address the, the board about the property tax, proposed property tax rates? Now would be the time to do so. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for the property tax rates. Next on the agenda is items, item six, citizen comments. Anyone in the public care to address the board? Now is the time to do so, and you will be given up to three minutes. Now is the time, yes. If you would just, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm Paula Martin, 8745 Litzinger.
Hang on, just a second, if you would, one of the microphones, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry. I'm Paula Martin, 8745 Litzinger, and I'm here to express my concerns about a drag queen story hour that went on at the Brentwood Library in June. Several people have told me the Board of Alderman has nothing to do with the library. But I think if enough people are concerned about this, the city administration will have to have some influence to bear. I've been reading about drag queen story hours in other cities, and I never expected it to happen in Brentwood. The person who read the story goes as Maxie Glamour, and he was in full makeup and costume for the event. I looked up his Facebook page and his website. On his Facebook page, he mentions, among other interests, demonology and pornography. His webpage is very blatantly pornographic. And I don't think this is an appropriate role model for children of any age. In other cities, they have found a progression from drag queen story hours for little kids to drag queen makeup classes for older kids, to drag queen sex education for young teens. And no parents are allowed in the sex education classes. I don't think this, I don't think we want this to represent our community. I certainly don't. And I'm encouraging everyone I know to complain about it. I have talked with the library. I know that you have no legal authority, but I hope you will bring some moral authority to this situation.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public care to address the board? Any aldermanic replies, responses?
Should I try?
If you'd like, make sure you can speak into the microphone.
Yeah. As library liaison, let me respond a bit to that. There were a number of people at the last library board meeting. There are seldom visitors, but there were 15, and they were apparently, I was not able to be there, but from the minutes and the speakers, they were overwhelmingly happy with the way the story hour had gone because of the inclusion and the emphasis on diversity, acceptance of everybody. If we can read the minutes of that meeting, one of the people attending was a seven-year-old boy who had written how much he got out of that meeting. So I would like to find it, and I encourage everyone else to look at it too. For a child that age, to come away with that kind of message is a plus. There is no intention, from what I can hear from the board, to have anything other than a story hour along with the lines of acceptance and inclusion. There are no further plans. Whatever's happened in other cities is not on the agenda here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next on the agenda is item seven, mayor and alderman reports. Mayor has no report. Alderman Kramer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Here to announce that the Brentwood Forest Board of Managers is having its monthly meeting for the residents coming up the last Tuesday of this month, which is the 24th, at the Brentwood Forest Clubhouse. 9,000 Brentwood is the address if you cannot familiar. All residents are welcome. And just prior to the 6:00 PM meeting of the board, the 5:30 meeting is for Ward Four specifically, which includes the commercial areas. And this coming meeting is 24th and 5:30 for Ward Four and the 6:00 PM. We're fortunate to have Craig Schluter from Navigate Building Solutions to be coming with a short presentation to help educate the members of our body about Brentwood Bound.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Alderman Leahy?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Ward Three meeting for the month of September will also be Tuesday night, the 24th, at 7:00 PM in the Rec Center. Brentwood Days is this coming weekend. Whether to cooperate and come out and enjoy the community.
Thank you. Alderman Lockmuller?
I'd just like to remind Alderman Leahy, there's still some time to sign up for the 5pm race to the board.
Yes. I'm not going to be running.
That'll be September 21st. It's the morning of the Brentwood Days Parade, right before the parade. And you can go to Brentwood100.org to get more, to register and get information. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman O'Neil?
No report.
Alderman Ploukka?
I have no official report, except I want to extend a thank you to the Brentwood Fire Department and the EMS. My mother-in-law fell earlier today, and my wife reported to me that, that the response was, was quick, and the officers who responded were very courteous and very professional, and I just want to thank them for their service. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sims?
No report.
Alderwoman Tice?
No report.
And Alderman Weggie?
Uh, no report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, city administrators' report. Madam City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor Dimmitt. Craig Schluter.
It's a long walk now.
Yeah. We need more space. Good evening. Craig Schluter with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be providing the Brentwood Bound update. The only costs this Board of Alderman meeting on the warrant list came out of the soft cost category. Those soft costs include Deer Creek flood mitigation, engineering and design, project management, and property acquisition legal fees. Total spent to date is $2,759,121.30. A few other high-level updates. You all approved a community engagement effort back in August. The Community Engagement Task Force met last week to talk about how the city, from the citizen standpoint, could vote on, like, additional park improvements if those additional $8 million were received from the, the groups that we've talked about. So the survey will go live this week. And that survey will be on BrentwoodBound.org along with other social media outlets like Nextdoor and Facebook. So I encourage you and all the citizens to go out and to vote on the additional park improvements that we've talked about with you all. At Brentwood Days, there will be a tent set up where there, you could also go and the citizens go and vote in, on what park improvements are important to them. On October 2nd, at the Brentwood Community Senator, Center, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, there will also be an open house, just like we, we've had in this room, for the citizens to come to learn about all those different park improvements, what they really are, like the playground, the water feature, the trails, really learn from the landscape architects and from Eric, the Parks Director. And then there will be two different presentations on that night along with boards set up, just again, very similar to what you've seen here at this open house. The task force will then present the Planning and Zoning Commission in October. And then the task force will then present to you all in November on their recommendations, on the feedback they've received from the citizens, on how they would like to recommend, if the city were to receive all eight million dollars, how they would like you all to consider spending that money on additional park improvements. So that's the next couple of months. That's the same schedule that was lined out with that change order that you all approved in August. And those are kind of the next steps. We encourage you all to talk with the citizens in your words. Spread the word, because we really want everyone to get out and vote.
Thank you. Alderman Ploukka?
Thank you. I have two questions, Craig. One, do you, can you get a copy of the list of the different improvements that are gonna make up the survey?
Yes.
And then, secondly, attached to those descriptions, is there gonna be not only a title, but a text description and a, and a prediction of the cost?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll have Janet send to Mola the survey, and then she, she can share that with you all.
Great.
But the survey has photos and renderings of each improvement.
I'll read it.
And then it goes through the different projects and then also the costs next to it. So the survey asks for the citizens to just vote without considering the costs. Just what are, what's the most important thing to you? A playground or more trails? And then the next category, it says, if the city were to receive eight million dollars, what, how would you prioritize those? And it has the monetary amount next to each project. So a citizen could say, alright, I'd like to do the playground for two million, and then the trails for five million. That roughly gets eight million dollars. That's how I'd like you all to consider that. So, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely get that shared with you all before it goes live and so that way you can spread that around.
And so the intention of that second part is to, is for the people to put numbers, like one being the most important thing they think, and then two-
Yes.
Sort of rank them.
Exactly.
Okay.
And that way, you know, like we've talked about before, the goal of, of all the staff and consultants is to raise more than eight million dollars, is to ultimately fund everything. We can't guarantee that now, but at least if, if we do fall short, we can have a general consensus from all the citizens on, of the priorities.
Right.
And that way, we all can make a sound decision on what improvements to advance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Leahy?
Does the survey also include potential crosswalks across Manchester?
It does not. It's, it's focused, what?
Should it?
The problem with the crosswalks, like we discussed before, is it's really beyond all of our controls. You know, even beyond MoDOT, it goes to the federal highway. So even if the citizen said, we want more crosswalks, mid-block crossings, I think is what you were referring to, the hogs. You know, I mean, we, we've expressed it to MoDOT. They're trying to advance it, but it's, it's, it's not really a money issue like the park improvements. It's more of like legality and issue where we just can't add mid-block crossings. So it doesn't mean we aren't trying, you know, we, we-
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Then I kind of get the, the feeling, and forgive me, I haven't seen the survey, so.
Okay.
But it sounds like if we had this much money, how do you want to put park things together?
Mm-hmm.
Where some of the issues still that are out there is best access in and out of the whole development area and the safety of making it.
Mm-hmm.
You've got a 10-foot-wide walkway going along the entire south side of Manchester.
Yes.
How is that going to affect Costello? You're gonna take out their whole front row of parking.
Okay.
Type thing. How does, I mean, instead of spending money just to spend it for park features, this program still has some issues with it that need to be, I guess, prioritized before we get into the luxury items, as I would see it.
Okay.
That's, so, yeah, you can give me a survey that says, this is what we'd like, but if it's not within the entire scope and picture of what's down there, then it's kind of skewed.
Sure. So I hear what you're saying. There is a part of the survey where people can write in their priorities beyond the items that are already on there. So any citizen could write down, you know, what you're referencing, Alderman Leahy, about mid-block crossings or maybe how their parking's impacted. I mean, there, there's a spot for that, and that will be evaluated. The, the engagement that you all approved was additional park features. So that's what we're all carrying out here based on, you know, the August Board of Alderman approval.
Thank you.
But like I said, there is a section that even beyond what's on the survey, any citizen could write down any, any of the priorities that they want to see beyond that.
Anything else?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
I'm still back wondering, how do we know there will be eight million dollars left to do all these? If there are cost overruns that eat into that, that may not be possible. So does it sound as though we're, we're opening something for residents to say, I want this, this, and this, and then that money is not available and they're disappointed? How, how is this put together?
Well, the survey is saying that the city anticipates raising additional eight million dollars, and that's what we still anticipate today. Right now, the project continues to trend under budget, so we don't have any current concerns that, that it's gonna go beyond the 79.6 million, which is what the 2018 and 2019 COPs raised. But it, it is saying it's anticipated, because right now, the city's only received five million. We anticipate getting additional three million from Gray Ridge Greenway by the end of this year. And that's why we ultimately have those priorities, is that if, if, let's say, only five million, the money that the city has received to date, and that's all they receive, even though that's very unlikely, at least we'll understand what priorities there are that they want, and we can spend that five million to accommodate those additional features they have. So no part of the survey is saying it's a guarantee or anything. It's carefully worded, but, you know, it is extremely likely with the way this project has gone and where it is today, that the city will have additional funds for additional projects. And we want to make sure that we start planning on that early, 'cause if we tell them that three years from now, it'll cost a lot more money to do those projects three years from now rather than if we plan for it now. And specifically to that, like, if the citizens want those loop trails to go through the flood mitigation, you know, we will want that to go out to bid with the flood mitigation improvements next year, because we'll want that contractor to grade and put the trails, not to plant trees and two years from now, take out trees and put in trails. So things like that, we're trying to capture those construction efficiencies, design efficiencies, to make sure that, you know, whatever the citizens want, we make sure we plan for that now with the information we have. So I think the project's in a good state, and we're just trying to, you know, capture the citizens' priorities.
I understand that as long as the residents do.
Yeah. And it is worded like that. It does not say, like, there's this eight million sitting in a pot and we're gonna spend it. It just says, the city, you know, anticipates raising eight million dollars. If they do raise eight million dollars, how would you like them to spend it on these projects?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have two items. The first is standing committee reports, and the second are the warrant lists. The warrant lists are operating budget expenditures of $137,943.46, and the certificates of participation is for $248,757.40 for a grant total of $386,786.86. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right. Shelley, I'll let you figure that one out. We have a discussion. Alderman Leahy?
Thank you. In the one warrant list under, uh-
Are we talking about certificates of participation or the general?
The general warrant list.
Thank you.
I have a hundred thousand dollar charge for the ADA, I'm sorry, I have a hundred thousand dollar budgeted. I have a six thousand dollar charge for the budgeting of ADA activity. And I'm curious, what is that going for? This is the Horner Schaefer, Schiffern? Schiffern. Capital Improvement Fire?
Capital Improvement.
Alderman, you've been either demoted or promoted. Chief, curtain.
Okay, Alderman Leahy, would you mind repeating your question?
Okay. On the warrant list, I have professional, professional services for ADA mitigation project, first invoice at 20% completion. It's a six, $5,952 charge against a hundred thousand dollar budgeted item.
I see your confusion on that. I wrote that on, on my check request form, and, and that's the 20% completion of the design and engineering costs. So that hundred thousand is our budgeted amount for 2019.
Okay.
Of that, that's going to dovetail right into 220, like we did the mold project. We split it over a two-year budget plan. This is the money that was approved in last year's, or in the 19 budget. This is merely the first draw from the Horner and Schiffern Engineering for design and engineering of the interior ADA corrections within our building. So bathrooms, kitchens, things like that. This does not include the elevator. This does not include the property improvement next to the firehouse. Those have all been tabled for a little while longer. This is our next step of positive progression towards completing all these things as identified in the 2013 report Terry Johnson put together. So this is, this is just the next phase of work, working towards the ultimate completion of this project. So last year, we approved money to buy the house next to the firehouse.
Yes.
This year, money's been allocated for demolition and site clearing and land, or backfilling and seeding, okay? That's gonna stay untouched for a while. That has no, nothing to do with the project we're undertaking this year and next year.
We're fixing, so we're designing fixes to the current building.
Correct.
For, that aren't ADA compliant.
That is correct. So I'll give you a few examples. So we have some kitchen cabinets that have to be readdressed. We have grab bar relocations. We have sink height problems, mirror height problems. Lots and lots of little things within the existing building that will take some small amount of work and some bigger amount of work, depending upon what it is.
Behind the wall.
But we ultimately have to have engineering and design drawings for all that to go to bid with, which will come a little later this fall. So this is just simply Horner and Schiffern's first draw against their contract.
May I alter a little bit, Your Honor?
Sure.
We raised the question about taking down the building next door. Do we have a timeframe of when that might happen?
My best recollection from talking with Dan is currently, we're waiting on all the utilities to finish disconnecting. And then, very soon, as soon as we have all those letters of official disconnect, then the fire department's gonna use it for a few weeks for training. And then the demolition crews come on or around the beginning, middle of October, somewhere in that timeline.
Thank you.
All of that's a little flexible, so.
Yes, weather permitting and things.
Right. Did I, did I cover what you were after on the warrant list?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Alderman Leahy, are you good with that, or you want this removed off the consent agenda?
This can remain on the consent.
Okay. Any further discussion about the cons, items on the consent agenda? Okay, rule call, please, Shelley.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmuller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Parker Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Ploukka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes. That's it. Could you leave this one to me?
You jumped in on, on me and see.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
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 Okay. Motion passes eight oh. All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, item 10, old business. Bill number 6255. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second reading by title only, please?
Bill number 6255, second reading in consideration of the ordinance adopting and enacting the code ordinances in the city of Brentwood, establishing the saying, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances is not included here expressly provided, providing for the manner of amendment of the code of ordinances, providing penalty for the violation of, providing when this ordinance shall become effective.
Thank you. Chairman, entertain a motion to perfect bill number 6255 into ordinance form?
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Sims.
Second.
Second by Alderman Weggie, I believe. Okay, any further discussion? Any discussion at all? Okay, rule call, please, Shelley.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmuller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Parker Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Ploukka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
It's bill number 4894.
Ordinance.
Yes, Alderman Sims.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item 11, new business. Bill number 6257. Can we get a first reading by title only, please, Mr. City Attorney?
Bill number 6257, first reading. An ordinance to confirm, ratify, and approve a rate of tax to be assessed and collected for each $100 of assessed valuation for the year 2019 for, A, general municipal purposes, B, to provide the annual contribution to the city of Brentwood's Police and Environment Retirement Fund, C, to pay principal and interest on the same, as the same matures on indebtedness of the city of Brentwood evidenced by bonds, D, to pay for the maintenance of the public library, providing for the effective date of this ordinance, and providing for the repeal of all conflicting ordinances.
Thank you. Mola, who's handling, are you handling this? Is Karen handling this?
Karen Sanders.
She's telling me to move, I don't know what she's talking about. Okay. Okay, so you got the ordinance with the rates, and we got the final assessed value, valuations from the county today after the Board of Equalization meetings. We got them earlier today, and so you have the final numbers, which means we do not have to have another meeting at the end of the month. We presented these proposed ones to Ways and Means on September 5th. While the assessed valuations from then, them, from that meeting to now went down, go figure, the rates actually went up. And I checked those to make sure, went back, and as I explained to them, there is a, this is the document that the county gives you, or the state auditors give you, where we plug in figures and it calculates the rates, and we have to use them. It has all the laws already built in there and everything. And I went back and looked, and there were some percentages over in the next few pages, and it explains the reasons why the tax rates went up. So at any rate, these are your actual rates. You approve them tonight, and they will get sent and make it on time to October 1st to the county. Any questions? Yes?
Alderman Kramer?
Yes, Your Honor, if I could. Last year, 2018 residential rates were a penny lower, is that, is that right?
Residential rates for the library or a pension?
Well, total.
Oh, okay.
Fifty-five and a half now, was it 54? I don't see it, but I'm guessing that.
All right, I don't have the, uh, 2018-
Was it 24 or something?
Um, I think it was for, um, for 18.
Yeah. The total.
The total, the residential?
Should be residential now for 19 is .550. Do you have the 18?
I'm not certain if this is correct, 'cause it's .6440, it's not 5.
No, I'm talking about 19.
Yeah, 19 is what they just said.
Right.
.5550. Something about that. But let's ask it what it was last year.
Right. No, I don't have, we don't have that.
It appears as though it's only slightly higher than last year based upon the revenues that I see change year over year.
Oh, yes. Could very well be, yes. But again, they're all based on those assessed valuations. Now, last year, we do know, as we went over residential, I actually have that in front of me, residential valuations was 151 million, where it's 180 million this year. But again, that is all built into this document that the county gives us. So we put in the assessed values, it calculates the rates.
And despite a lot of the, despite a lot of the outcry from a lot of the residents across the county in our city, it looks like the assessed valuation post-Board of Equalization didn't go down a whopping amount.
Right.
Actually, we're kind of fortunate in that regard.
Right. Did not, no.
And one thing I wanted to make sure that the residents know, we, Your Honor, we try to say this on a regular basis as we can, despite the fact that our esteemed colleagues up here, all of us approve the rates, the actual taxes that the residents pay in their mortgages is a product of this and the school rates.
That is correct.
We won't get the school rates until October sometime, is that right?
My guess is the schools going through the same thing we're going right now. In fact, I saw where they had theirs posted coming up, I think next week, posted to go before their board. So, and I think they have the same October 1st deadline we do to get it there, to get it to the county.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Anything else?
Anyone else? Any questions for Karen? All right. Can we get second reading of bill 6257 by title only, please?
Bill number 6257, second reading in consideration of adoption of the ordinance to confirm, ratify and approve the rate of tax to be assessed and collected for each $100 of assessed valuation for the year 2019 for A, general municipal purposes, B, to provide the annual contribution to the city of Brentwood's Police and Environment Retirement Fund, C, pay principal and interest as the same matures on indebtedness of the city of Brentwood evidenced by bonds, D, to pay for the maintenance of the public library, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and providing for the repeal of all conflicting ordinances.
Thank you. Motion to perfect bill 6257 into ordinance form?
Your Honor?
Your Honor.
Second.
Who made the motion?
I don't know. I, I interrupted somebody.
I made the motion.
Okay. Alderman Plufka made the motion to perfect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alderwoman Sims, second. Any further discussion? Is that right, Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
All right. You, you have me gun-shy. Any further discussion?
Just one.
Yes.
Just to make the point that what we're voting on tonight is simply math. And we are voting on plugging in the existing rates for all of these various categories, including the pension and others. And that this is not a vote to set the rates or to set the budgets of any of these entities.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmueller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?